Welcome this evening. We'll go ahead and get started. First up, we're gonna have, is anyone here from the Student Angel Network? I don't see Ms. Cook. We're gonna skip down to C. To get started. First up, we'll have a DECA presentation.
There he is. He's coming in right there.
Thank you, members of the school board, Dr. Ballinger. Tonight, joining us at the board meeting is our DECA chapter. They had recently competed at the state DECA conference, and we wanted to present, have them talk a little bit about the awards that they won and the recognition that they received at the state level. And I believe there's, it was fourteen, is it now? How many?
Thirteen.
Thirteen are now competing at the national level, and that's in Orlando, Florida. So I'm gonna let Mr. Gardner present his group.
Thank you, Mr. Ganesha. Good evening. I want to start by saying I came to Warren County in 2016. And when I came there, there wasn't a DECA chapter at Warren County High School. At Don Dorman for about, I don't know, I guess for, I know for at least three years. And that first year, we had thirteen members. This year, we had over a hundred. I counting alumni, professional members, and sixty student members. This was about thirty years a year as a DECA advisor. And I'll start by saying this is the first time that I've ever been fortunate enough to have student competitors win first place at the state level. And not only one, but two teams. And I'm gonna let them tell you what they did. There, we also, so I'm gonna let them introduce themselves to you and tell you what they did. Before I start, I'd like to introduce Hadi Rutz as my co-advisor. She's been very instrumental and very helpful past couple of years. And so our chapter's only going, only going to get stronger. So first, I'll introduce to you Kaylee Pressgrave and Nathan Greenwell. And I'll tell you all about their project, which lays first in state.
Hi, I'm Kaylee Pressgrave.
I'm Nick Greenwell.
We presented the Wildcat Movie Theater Financial Literacy Project. And we went to Wilson Morrison where we demonstrated how to use opportunity costs and budgeting to fourth grade students. Where we then presented our project to a judge at Virginia Beach, and we won first place, and now we're going to.
Too bad I can't get that in the classroom. Anyway. And next, I'd like to introduce to you Ally Musel. Ally was one of two student managers. We run, operate three school-based enterprises. And a school-based enterprise is a student-operated, student-managed business. We have three of them. We have Wildcats Live, which is the one we do the live streams of athletic events. And we partnered with W. Alexander National Media. And recently, we received a grant from WCSEE. And we now operate an in-house studio. We do video morning announcements. And we're starting to expand those operations. We also have Wildcats Den, which is an online e-commerce site. Where we sell the school apparel, spirit wear. We converted that from a traditional school store to an e-commerce site due to the pandemic. So we were very successful. We decided to keep down our inventory costs and let it go. And so, and then our third, Deck Tailgaters, which is, if you've been to the Loeben festivals, you've probably seen in the white trailer, that's us. And all three were recognized at the state leadership conference as gold certified by national standards through national DECA. So Ally, I was all about Deck Tailgaters.
Hi. Deckers Tailgaters is front out of Carolina Dreamin'. We go to a lot of festivals around the town. We raised over four thousand in gross sales this year, which is really good. We focus a lot on market analysis. At least that's what we focused on to compete. So looking at customer profiles and deciding menus and pricing based on that. Thank you.
Deck Tailgaters placed first in school-based enterprise food operations at state columns. And lastly, but certainly not leastly, Sadie Patterson was our, our chapter. Ran a state officer candidate. Even although she didn't win the election as a region-three vice president, she ran a very clean, very strong campaign. I received a number of compliments from other chapter advisors from around the state that came out and said, she's got it going. So she's one of our chapter officers. So C, tell us about your campaign.
Yeah, so hi, I'm Sadie. Running the campaign was such an amazing experience because I got to meet so many other people who are interested in the same things as me. And I really got to learn more about DECA, like there's so much more than I thought I knew, only being a sophomore. But it was amazing for me and my campaign managers who couldn't be here today. But I guess we all were able to really experience DECA from a different perspective. Because last year, I did, I kind of strolled in and I looked at the campaigners from last year. And it was amazing to see that from a new perspective and to see how hard everyone has worked. And also to see my competition also working so hard. It was just overall a really beneficial experience for me in my DECA and future professional future.
And I would be remiss if I didn't mention this. Mr. Kanesh. Mr. Gardner, up here, please. Every year, Virginia DECA recognizes people who have been very supportive of local DECA chapters and Virginia DECA in particular. Mr. Kanesh was recognized and honored as a friend of Virginia DECA at our state conference. So he's been very supportive of us. We couldn't have done half of what we do without him looking at you saying, okay, Mr. Gardner, whatever you say, yo.
Well, not all.
Oh, but I can't, yeah, most time. But again, as you can see, we have a very strong student leadership. And the good thing about it is everybody up here, it just spoke to you, it was all in your classes. So next year, we will be back with you stronger, better in twenty-five, twenty-six. So thank you for having us tonight.
Thank you, and grand release.
It's the same, that's eight things, you all.
There we go. All right, I'll, I'll be very fond to, and very grateful.
I'm gonna ask just one more time. I don't see Ms. Cook here, but if anybody's here from Student Angel Network, I have you next on the agenda. Okay, is that gonna be better? Okay, perfect. So I'm not seeing anybody from Student Angel Network. So we're gonna move on to, is there a motion to accept or modify the agenda?
Make a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
Is there a second?
Second.
All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? Thank you. Next up, is there a motion on the consent agenda?
I move that the consent agenda be approved as presented?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? Thank you. Next up, we have reports this evening. First up, we have the school resource officer report and update.
Good afternoon. So as you've seen in your packet, the numbers in February weren't too bad. We only had twelve incidents amongst all the divisions. A majority of them were a threat assessment and then just informational reports kind of took control of most of the reports. We're hoping to keep the downward trend going. We do have day or day planned for our fifth graders on April eleven. So that will take place down at Bencroft Stadium. So we'll spend all day with them. Also, the sheriff's office is hosting a summer camp, a week-long camp. More information about that is on our website, where people can apply to attend that. So we're starting to get back into those things. So there's the numbers. You guys have any other questions about any of the incidents? Yeah, all right. Thank you, thank you.
Next up, we have an ESS update. Mr. Smith.
Had the report from February? So Abby's been doing a lot of things onsite here, a bunch of events, both of February and some of the stuff that's going to be up in March. She was at Christendom on the Fourth of February, RMT for the Edge Career and Internship God Fair. She's been doing local meet and greet sessions at the library. This month, she had the table chat at Laurel Ridge. She had something going on the other month at Shenandoah. We had the intern job fair with Laurel Ridge on April third.
Can I ask a question, Laura?
Yeah, absolutely.
How have those, how have those been? Have some of these places been better recruiting places than others, or something?
It's usually tough for the first visit or two. So usually, the experience, and I've experienced this every time I've done these job fairs or the first couple of visits are a little dry. Each time gets a little better. The word spreads out. There, there's more people coming. You kind of get referrals and kind of things like that. So the other thing we started to do was to invite the applicants that are currently in the process. If she's gonna be out and available onsite to come. And we invite them to bring a guest or a friend, somebody else that may be interested. So as we're venturing, the colleges have really started to resume back in February. Everybody kind of came back. So we're saying, we're hoping for them to jump in towards the end of the year as they start to wrap up. But she's definitely had people come out, you know, some of them in the fewest two or three people, you know, up to ten or fifteen, so. Absolutely. We do think a little bit of dip down from the eighty-two percent in January to February. Did have more days, so I naturally explained that way, some more absences. Going into February, we had a district fill rate of seventy-nine percent. After we factor into building sub coverage, we were sitting in ninety-eight percent. Last month recorded, we had a thousand jobs picked up between March first and May thirty-first. Right now, we have over sixteen hundred jobs in there since the last time we were here. Clipping onto January, just to reflect, finished at the eighty-two point six percent. Seventy-eight percent compared to last year, so the fill rates have gone up another calendar year. Hadn't stayed the same for February. While we did finish at the seventy-nine percent last year, we finished at seventy percent. Ironically, or coincidentally, not ironically. And with the same amount of filled absences, exactly eight hundred and three for last February and this February. But the amount of total absences went down, so that's my, that's the increase in fill widths. The next page, we have the absences broken down by the schools. You could see that the fill rates there reflected. Some of the schools have the building subs. Those are the ones that you'll see usually at the higher ends, the hundred percents, the ninety-nine percents. I believe the only two schools that don't involve a building sub with some factors is LFK and I think it's Warren County Middle. Both of those don't necessarily have a building sub on staff. But keeping the fill rates high again, with that seventy-nine percent and ninety-eight percent. Skipping in the cost by building, the breakdown, the charge gotten long. I wanted to make sure that we showed everything from the start of the year to the end of the year, just have everything encapsulated. So at the end, you'll see February's numbers, just added to the previous spreadsheets. And then I have the breakdown on the next group as far as what's remaining in the schools. So that's the budget. You'd see, and I'm starting from roads down fifty-two thousand, all the way down to Warren County Middle, so it's seventy-four thousand for the total annual use of the year. So being honest, the next stage is the budget by building and the previous year comparison. You'd see, obviously, the budgets on the first column, what we spent so far. The long-term numbers haven't been updated since last month. I didn't have February's numbers. We didn't have them, and they're still being delineated out, which should be attributed to the teacher budget, which will be attributed to the sub-budget. So that will bring these total amounts spent down a little bit. So it'll give them a little more to buffer, which may come in handy because at this time, we have, if you look in the remaining column, we'll see that there are one, two, three, now four departments that have exceeded their budget for the year. So it's rolled over. So while we're seeing the retained, for example, roads is down eight thousand to the plus compared to last year. The schools that in our experience that we talked about before, the ones that were hit by pneumonia earlier in the year, that's the ones where you see like Wilson Morrison nineteen thousand over what they had spent last year. So bottom budget right there is fifty-two thousand. Send it twenty-two percent with really a month, month and a half left is pretty, pretty reasonable. So again, continue to fill. We'll continue to have job fairs and just keep on what we've been doing. Was there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. A great night.
Next up this evening, we have our February twenty-twenty-five financial reports. Mr. Valentine.
Good evening. Through the end of February, we were two, we are two-thirds of the way on a calendar basis through our festival year. And if you look at our expenses and our revenue, they're coming in pretty much as expected. Some lag more than others, some categories because, some jump out early in the budget year and then taper off. I guess at this point, it looks like, you know, we're gonna come in pretty close to budget at this point. There are some variables still out there. We need to find out about some things. But I'll let and answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Ryan?
Next up, we have the climate and culture comprehensive plan update.
That's one as well. Thank you, and good afternoon. Thank you, Mr. Bush. Okay. Thank you, Miss. All right. Yes, I'm here to give you an update in terms of climate and culture regards to our Amrihansap Pleya. So here, our mission is that all students and staff will be afforded a safe and engaging learning environment that promotes healthy behaviors and positive relationships for every student every day. We have two objectives in this part of the comprehensive plan. One objective line, all schools will maintain an average daily attendance rate of ninety-five percent. And I provided you a handout on the twenty-twenty-two, the current attendance data. If you wouldn't mind taking a look at this handout. So you can view the twenty-twenty-two through the current monthly attendance rate and compare them throughout the past three years. I want you to take a look, at the back, there's a blue column. The blue column on page two provides the end-of-year daily attendance average. There is one formula error that I noticed after posting. So I corrected that on your handout for you. The twenty-three, twenty-four daily average rate for WCHS should be ninety point six-two percent as updated on your handouts. As you can see, the attendance rates are consistently above ninety percent and above. Schools will continue to strive to meet the ninety-five percent goal, which is just within reach. And back to the slideshow here, the following measures are used to meet the overall objective. Schools not meeting the attendance expectations have established goals and action steps in their school plans. Schools will utilize engaging instructional strategies that include real-world connections. And teachers will greet students at the door daily. Objective two. As evidenced by yearly surveys, one hundred percent of students and staff will indicate that they feel safe in their school. To meet this objective, schools are utilizing positive behavior interventions and supports. Schools will develop tier systems of academic and behavioral supports. All teachers have completed a professional development module and culturally responsive instructional practice as licensure and renewal requirements. And all schools have updated their prices plans with collaboration from local agencies. I did want to give you some, some data from the surveys in regards to students and staff feeling safe in their school. This comes from the twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, twenty-four school climate surveys that our students and staff take at the secondary levels. Here, you have the student responses here. This division data indicates that we're on more the positive end of students feeling safe in school. But again, we have work to be done. You'll notice that one is where students would strongly disagree and six is where we wanna be with strongly agree. And here, as you can see, staff feelings of safety went from five point five in the twenty-two, twenty-three school year into a four point four in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Because this survey does not provide explanations for the decline, the safety and security team speculates there could be a correlation with the increased perception of bullying in the school that same year. Again, we recognize that this climate surveys only gauges students and staff at the secondary level. Our safety and security team works to ensure a positive school climate where it's safe for all students to learn in grades K through twelve, pre-K through twelve.
Any questions?
And there's nothing that can be changed about the survey to call any sort of explanation? I see.
I reached out prior to this. I asked if they, if there was anything, they, they said there's not. But the only thing that I could do through our team is to, she shared with me the past three years. And so the best way to do it is to dig through that. As we were digging through, has been the team thinks it could be a correlation to the bullying. So it's a lot of speculation. And also, we wondered with other surveys, could it be also tied to staff's perception of discipline? So one of the things, another thing that we're working on is to make sure and that we're developing practices where we have consistent discipline. Because that's something staff cares a lot about, is making sure that when students make mistakes, that we're holding them accountable and we're practicing those positive behavior interventions to prevent behaviors from occurring.
Any other questions for Naza? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving into our action agenda this evening, first up, we have the acceptance of a donation.
Madam Chair, all members, good evening. Tonight, I had the opportunity to tell you about two donations. The first donation I'd like to talk to you about, and I'd also like to call up head baseball coach. Jesse Henry, come up here with me in case you have any questions. Warren County High School has been fortunate enough to receive the donation of a shed from Nova Power Systems. And the baseball and softball team plan to store their equipment to use the shed, and it would be on the field. And it was, they provided a picture and of where the shed would be located on the field. And then also a picture of the type of shed that would go with it. And we're here tonight to see, to see if the Warren County School Board would accept the donation as presented to the Warren County High School Athletic Department with gratitude. If you have any questions, I'm sure the coach will be able to fill them and knock it out of the park. I understand he's a pretty outstanding athlete, so, but.
Are there any questions? Is there a motion?
I move that the Warren County School Board accept the donation as presented to the Warren County High School Athletic Department with gratitude.
Is there a second?
A second.
All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
I'm both no. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. We'll have an opportunity again tonight to talk to you about another donation. AS Roads Elementary has been utilizing the Benevity website and it's to recruit volunteers from Coles to help with school events. They've had a longstanding with Coles and working with them and their employees. If they volunteer for winter carols, field day events. And now they have started to help to donate money. And they've raised, again, through the work of the Coles people, they've received ninety dollars of donations from the winter carnival event. And through their work with them, they've received a donation of the amount of one thousand three hundred and ninety dollars of twenty-four cents from the UK Online Giving Foundation, which is a charitable foundation that provides donations to the giving platform. And standing here tonight to ask if Warren County School Board would accept the donation as presented for AS Roads Elementary School with gratitude. They will be using these donations for classroom materials that's been requested by the teachers.
Any questions for Dr. Coster? Is there a motion?
I move the Warren High School Board accept the donation as presented to AS Roads Elementary School with gratitude.
Is there a second?
A second.
All is in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? Thank you, Dr. Coster. Next up this evening, we have the second reading. And I will ask if anybody is here this evening to speak on the policies that are having their second reading, which is gonna be J O B, Administration of Surveys and Questionnaires, J F H A B, Privacy, Dignity, and Respect for All Students in Warren County Public Schools, E E A V, School Bus Scheduling and Rounding, E I, Insurance Management, E C A B, Vandalism, F E, Playground Equipment, F E A, Educational Facility Specifications, C N, Flag Decor and Displays A, C N, Flag Decor and Displays B, C N, Flag Decor and Displays A plus B. Or there's a lot, just in case anybody wants to talk on those. Okay, Dr. Coster.
Hi, you're Madam Chair. And again, this is the second reading of the policies that you, you've gone through, Madam Chair. One of the things I would like to note, there was a question about policy C N. That's why there is an A, a B, and the request was to combine them. So that's why all three are left on. And I wanted to know if they're moving forward for the third and reading for approval. I'd like to bring one policy C N, whichever is decided on or the board sees fit for tonight. So are there any questions, suggestions, recommendations for any of the policies for the second reading?
Is, check out. Is the combined C N one, that's, I understand you guys combined it, but that was with input from, there were questions last time with like classroom, the teachers, and we were talking about, is that what you guys all feel encompasses everything we would need?
Trying to accomplish everything we can within the realms of meeting the parameters. Both policies, yes, be able to help, be able to utilize for classroom instruction. But also, you know, for any athletic teams, for both curricular programs, and they have flags they utilize, we wanted to make sure that was incorporated into the.
No, Madam Chair, we did not send out an email to staff and say if you, what we, what I did. So when I met with like my advisory group or with WCEA, we, I did talk to them about looking at policy. And, you know, if they had any recommendations for policy, that they could send their recommendations to me or to Dr. Coster. And then we would forward those recommendations to the board if there was any, anything concerning the policies. And I did specifically mention policy C N. And I don't believe I received any emails that I could recall. And, but we did have conversations with those two groups.
We have a couple edits, if that's okay, or to talk about edits. I thought a great job of combining the two, so thank you for taking the input that we talked about last time. The only thing I'd say is on, on the, under the decor displays section, we, I think we discussed from the A version, I think, A version, that we, this B ver, this B version, which is the format for the one we're looking at right now, after, under decor displays, the second paragraph, it says, employees must not use classroom decorations. I think we liked the idea of talking about employees, students, or agents having all three folks brought into this policy. I think that was in, in policy A. It was not in policy B. And I think that line there would say, employees, students, or agents must not use classroom decorations or displays, so on and so forth. I think we talked about that last time. And then the only other thing would be, I know we talk about school property and school buildings. I don't know how buses are included in this, and I don't, you know. So whether it's even under flags, or it says Warren County Public Schools, so on and so forth. So on and so forth, on or in the classroom, school grounds, buses or W C P S issued property. Again, I think we also need to add employees, students or agents in that, in that line as well. Just while we're talking, but I don't, again, I just know, I don't know if buses are just considered property or.
So a bus is considered a mobile classroom.
It is.
Okay, but it is school property. So, so yes, it would fall under this policy. We would not have to specifically mention buses, uh, because it is school property.
Okay, but I would say in that first line under flags, Warren County Public Schools. Schools, employees, comma, students or agents should not display any flags. So we just, that, that again, that, that, that comma. And that's the only input I have. I thought you did a great job putting it all together. Oh, and one last thing, under the bullet points, around the bullet points, the one, two, three, four, five, six. When we delete it two and three, obviously numbers four, five and six have to become two, three and four or whatever. I think it's great. Thank you for your work.
Just a small edit on number five at the bottom. This should be the town in front, Royal. We're not a seat.
We can hope.
So what I'm hearing is we're just, this is the one that edited, I remember anyway, just talking about the, the one combined is what.
That's what we were bringing in. I think Dr. Custer, you've been making the edits, so.
I don't, we won't have to do A, B.
No, I think, yeah, I don't think this one's mine. Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Get rid of A and B, keep this A and B together.
Alright, yeah. Head up from policy A, students, agents with the policy. At both parts.
Yes.
Actually, we adjust for a good one, two, three, four, seven, one, four, five, six. And then in the refile office, official play and tail of our lawyer.
Yes. Alright, I'll pay you this price.
Anything on any of the other policies this evening?
Thank you, Dr. Custer. Moving into the work session, so don't go far, um, facilities update. Dr. Custer.
Yes, madam chair, but you have the opportunity to, um, share the good news, the good, the good things about our facilities update that I want to share with you all. And, um, just to let, just to kick it off and start with is that I want to give, um, special recognition to our maintenance department. Our maintenance department has been doing an outstanding job and on the sled by Mr. Brian Hellick, who's. He's still with us here, still with you here tonight in case you do have any questions. But we have a total number of eighteen employees that, uh, work within our maintenance department. And from that, we do have a fleet of twenty-two vehicles. We are, um, someday wanting to get was a bucket truck. We were hoping to get one from the city, but due to some. Some of the insurance and making sure things repair, we were not able to financially work that within, but that is a goal. And also I'd like to send a special thank you to our building committee. We, as you know, we have a building committee, consists of two board members and also, um, two board supervisors. It's a joint building committee where we discuss and work on trying to make sure that our facilities maintain update. So some, just some of the highlights of our capital improvement projects. Um, the L F K renovation was completed, uh, July twenty twenty-four. I could take no credit, except for the opportunity to walk through the building. Um, they've done a great job. The E Wilson Morrison Elementary Gymatorium renovation. That was completed in August of two thousand twenty-four. And I'm sure if you wanted to walk over there, you would probably get quite a few students that would tell you thank you and hug, hug your kneecaps and glove you for it. So, um, now the Skylive High School Auditorium lighting, that is still in progress. The components have been ordered for the update. Um, it is taking a while for some of the parts to get in, but that is still an ongoing, um, project. Hopefully it'll be completed before the end of the school year. The, um, Hilda J Barber Cooling Tower renovation, that has also been completed, it's completed in February of this current year, two thousand twenty-five. And just to let you know, um, as of March twelfth, our maintenance department has handled over one thousand five hundred and thirty-one. Word wars. So they've been, um, they've been kept busy. Some of the things that they've been working on, we have had the installation of keyless entries. Uh, the Skylive High School, Warren County Middle School and Hilda J Barber Elementary. We will be, um, that'll be a part of our discussion at our, um, building committee. The other thing, the energy management system that we're wanting to make sure that we get updated and installed currently is at Skyline High School. Warren County High, Skyline Middle School, E Wilson Morrison and Hilda J. We hope to, um, that is continuation of our capital improvement plan. And basically, the energy management system is a way of maintaining, um, then checking, it's a computerized system that we can check to make sure that. See where the heating and cooling is being handled. Some of our summer projects that we have coming up. Uh, we want to construct the secure vestibules at Blue Ridge Tech, E Wilson Morrison and Hilda J Barber Elementary. That's the goal. The ACHS back, we want to make sure that we have a coal cleaning and chemical cleanings that are in all of our chillers and towers. We're able to get that done this summer, get that in, that'll help prolong the life of, so we won't have to replace, um, one of our chillers. Um, we are doing preventive maintenance on our boilers and our roof. Um, one of the things that I'd like to hand to you all that just recently got here and I did not have time to, uh, put it as a slideshow. They, um, Mr. Hellick just had them finish up. It's a roof assessment. So this is, can show, it actually shows you where our roofs are. Um, how, what level they're at, are they in good quality, poor quality, or, um. What needs immediate repairs, looking into with the cost estimate. So that, this will be coming to you in the future about other capital improvements. We do have, um, the roofing in Hilda J. It is one of our, um, future capital improvement projects. Um, some other things that our maintenance staff are going to continue to be doing is she goes, there, this summer will be the painting and carpet renovations. And just, just kind of let you know ahead of time, it hasn't happened yet. Maybe I shouldn't say it out loud, but I'm going to, we will be coming to you all. Um, hopefully in the near future to talk to you about, uh, getting the two main gems. Uh, one at, at each high school, getting the floors refinished and repainted. Uh, we'll have some information about that. The calls forward to on that. The other thing is that we're looking at, again, the fencing around E Wilson. Um, if we, depending on funding, as you, as you all know. Uh, everything does depend on the finances, but those are some things that we are definitely taking a look at. And as I mentioned, our future capital improvement projects, we want to finish up with our energy management system for all schools. The roofing and also the, um, Warren County High School and, um, Skyline High School tennis courts are also on our capital improvement plan. For the near future. We did receive some information, um, from, actually from the mayor that, uh, showed one company where they had redone. Um, they did a resurfacing on their tennis court. So we did reach out to them, to talk to them, to come and see what they, what recommendations they may have. So we're looking at all options, uh, for our capital improvement plans. Does anyone have any questions concerning, um, facilities?
Dr. Custer, will you be able to add this pour to these board ducks for?
I can, I can do that. I can do that at.
Or somewhere, and if you, just so the public can see also that we have a lot of pores here on our roof assessment, it looks like.
Yeah, a- and that's one thing. So currently with our, uh, if you look at where we're at with our. Finance update, um, on that document, you can see that in facilities. Uh, we're showing that there is approximately. Three hundred, three hundred thousand that we have in the facilities. Um, one of the things we're talking about, and I did ask Dr. Custer to add this to the building committee, uh, agenda. But if we can actually take and do the roof at Hilda now. Then that would allow us to remove that extra off of our FY twenty-six budget requests. Because we have some funds there around three hundred to. How, like, exactly know exactly how much we have there, but it's, it's probably around three fifteen to three twenty. Uh, and as you can see on the report, it, it says that it's poor. Um, where, when we're looking in, and according to our, our, uh, capital improvement plan. We were scheduled to replace Hilda's roof in two thousand twenty-five anyway.
Correct.
So, looking at where we're at, we have some funds available. And I know Rob's been working with the county to check on some things. Uh, to make sure that if we could go ahead, and I've already talked to Mr. Hellick about getting some quotes. Uh, as far, because this would be a, a, a big bid, uh, that would have to come to the board to approve the bit, you know. Because it's gonna be over three hundred thousand dollars probably or around that figure. But if we could go in and, and attack some of those with some of the capital improvement plans, uh, funds that we have right now. That would take that off our list. So just trying to be proactive with, with where we're at. And so if we can actually get this project done, then that would take care of it and we wouldn't be doing our FY twenty-six budget. Uh, but we were wanting to kind of wait and see what this report was giving us. Um, but as you can see, it's, it's not. We, we, we have to do something. It, it's not gonna last too much longer. We don't want, you know, other structural damage to occur because of, of water damage. Uh, for slow leaks or things of that nature coming in, it's just compounds itself.
Could you tell us a little bit about the E Wilson Morrison roof? Cause I'm seeing in one spot core and I'm seeing another spot fail.
So you have a flashing boost. There's a client root being seen.
Well, on the chart, there's two roofs and they both say poor, but back here it says fail. So I just don't, like, is it fail? Or is it, or is it so good as?
He demanded that that survey is done by a roofing contractor and then wants to sell his roof. So. Here was a barber, yes, it's likely to expect to see us up. Some of the other pores, we have no issues with, and there's no sign. I mean, if they're twenty-five, thirty-year roof and they're fifteen years and they're saying poor, I gotta question that.
So the E Wilson Morrison roof, we're not overly concerned about it right now? Any other questions for Duck or House Hire?
Um, madam chair, one thing I, I would like to, um, share, we have the M O A. It's signed, uh, with our agreement for, uh, everything. So thanks in due diligence of everyone from the building committee. We have our agreement with the board of supervisors. So I wanted to let you all know that.
That's a little angry.
Excuse me, I mean, that's for the dang and then use of physicals.
Okay, great. Thank you. We're fully, we're full on that. Great. Next up this evening, we have the modified school calendar. Dr. Ballinger.
Thank you, madam chair. The Warren County Public Schools Modified School Calendar Committee, uh, consisting of parents, teachers and administrators. Uh, has, ha- have been meeting to discuss, uh, the pros and cons of moving to a modified four-day school calendar. Uh, the committee has reviewed research as well as other needs of our school community. Uh, the committee has recommended that a survey be conducted to gain additional feedback. From parents and guardians concerning a modified four-day school week. And we just wanted to kind of talk to the board about this. I do want to say, uh, welcome some of my committee members that, that serve on this committee. That, that we have some parents and some staff members, uh, here with us tonight that, that does serve on this committee. Uh, you know, we have been working on this for. Three, four months. Uh, it's, you know, we, we, we started looking at it a little bit last year, but we had to put, put it on hold. And then we got it going again, uh, you know, looking at that research of, of where, where it's at. Uh, concerning a, a four-day school week for schools. And of course, when you look, uh, you will find that research is mixed. Um, you know, there are some, some results where you see improvement. There are some results where you don't see improvement. There are some results where schools hold steady. Um, the one constant that I will say that, that you do see in, in one of the studies. And, and from my experience with, with moving a school to a four-day school week. Um, is that tie. Uh, you know, this would, you know, if, if moving to this and depending upon what our parents. Uh, and in guardians, the feedback we receive, you know, we would need to add thirty to forty-five minutes to the day. Uh, you know, because we need to make up that time. I think when you look at what the research says. Uh, the research shows that those school systems that didn't add additional time. That was the cause of either the decline or that it was a, a hold steady. Um, for, for those that did improve, uh, you did see that there was additional time added to the day. Uh, of course, Virginia requires either a hundred and eighty school days or nine hundred and ninety hours. Uh, we, we've looked at the calendar, uh, we, I, you know, I've given the committee a sample of what that may look like. And, you know, it, we've had a lot of discussion on that. We've also had a lot of discussion on, uh. You know, whether, what happens on that fifth day, you know, with, with, uh, you know, are there people that may still need, uh, some childcare? Can we offer a, a remediation day that, that on that Friday from eight to four? Or, uh, you know, for elementary, from nine to one for secondary. Uh, a long time, a couple of years ago, we did the survey with staff. We had well over a hundred and fifty teachers to say they would be willing to, to contract them work on that day from. You know, in that morning to provide remediation. Uh, you know, we probably need to update that survey to teachers to get additional feedback. But I think at the same time, uh, you know, we, we have discussed that idly. Um, I appreciate the feedback that the committee has given on this and, and really taken the, uh, into account a lot of things. Uh, you know, most of the time when people look at and moving to a, a four-day school week, it's. You, you look at, is there a cost savings to it? Uh, your cost savings, you're looking one to two percent. My experience, you don't, you don't hit that. You may hit half a percent savings. So it's not, there's not really a cost savings. Uh, there will be a little bit, uh, but not, not a whole lot, especially if we're still running on Fridays and having. You know, offering programming that's gonna reduce the, any cost savings because we're now paying people for an additional day. We're still running buses, we're still doing, uh, we're still heating our buildings, schooling our buildings, providing lunches. Um, breakfast and lunch. So we're still, we're still operating. So you're not gonna see any, any real savings. Um, what you do see with, with this, it would give an opportunity for, uh. For our staff to have a quality of life and, and it could be a recruitment tool as far as when it comes to. We know we are never gonna be able to compete with Prince Williams and Loudon and Fairfax on salaries. Um, there's just no way we are going to be able to, to put forth the money that, that those school systems can towards. Hiring and recruiting and, and, and paying for, for teachers and to come in. But what we can offer is, is a quality of life and, and maybe it's that extra day. And then, and I can tell you from my experience, um, of course, it was in a much, much smaller school system where, where this was done. Uh, you know, we did see, we did see where, uh, it was a recruiting tool for us. Uh, we went from getting one to two applicants to where we had two drawers full of applicants wanting to come when we had a vacancy. And we very seldom had a vacancy, but when we had a vacancy, we had a lot of people to choose for. Uh, I think that, you know, from a recruiting, you know, we always need to try, try something different. Uh, and from a recruiting standpoint, can this help us, uh, with, with our teachers? I mean, teachers are the most effective and they have the most impact on students. And, you know, if we are losing teachers on a regular basis and we're having to turn over thirty to, you know. Twenty-five, twenty to thirty teachers every year and or as our senior teachers, you know, they get to the top of the scale. They leave to go get a higher salary for the last three years for retirement purposes. You know, maybe this may change some of that to where, you know, is it, is it worked at leaving for three years? Or staying with us for the quality of life and some other things that we could offer. Uh, we wanted to give you an opportunity to review the survey. Uh, as you can see, when you open that, uh, we, we gave a quick introduction. And then I did add some, some leaks that, that takes, that will take the parents to some research. Um, we tried to be non-biased in that. So we, we put some, you know, that said, hey, it helped, hey, it didn't. Um, you know, I just, but we do encourage parents to, to do their own research. Uh, this, this survey would go after parents. Now, one thing we would want to do with this survey is make sure that. We would have, we only want parents to fill it out one time. We don't want somebody to keep filling it out or a student to get ahold of it and fill it out and skew our data. So, so what we will do, we will have to collect emails. So that then, once that email is lost, that same email account cannot do another survey. Uh, it's not to try to track or anything of that nature. It's just to, to put that block in there. To where we will not be able to allow that with, to, to submit multiple responses. With to to submit multiple responses. So that would be the only purpose. For for collecting emails so that we can make sure that we, we do give each family one opportunity. Or you know, the 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 families uh an opportunity to submit their survey. So uh wanted to provide and and. You know, the questions are on there and wanted to get your feedback. If you think, one, is this okay to go ahead and send this survey out? Uh we are to that point. We have had multiple discussions and it's it's to the point where we just need. We need to see what our parents say.
So um did you guys uh talk about or or look at any uh data or any research for impacts of, you know, staff absenteeism? I mean, has, did it?
So there's some research, there's some research that says it.
That one, like, so no, that's one thing we struggle with, obviously, but with that.
So, so we did talk about that a lot. Um you know, and 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 I don't think there's really any clear data on that. Um that shows, but that by having that, that one day, that that does allow for doctors appointments to be scheduled. Uh you know, we would encourage that, but we also know if everybody's scheduling, the doctors may fill up on Fridays. Uh or if it's Mondays. But the one thing I would say is that when we look at a, a four day school week. That means we would, we would always go at least four days. So where we have weeks that the holiday is on a Monday. Like say our, our survey says that parents uh would re- would really request that Fridays be the day off. But then on the days where Monday is a holiday, students would go to school Tuesday through Friday. So it wouldn't be that they would get Monday off and only go Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, yeah, Friday off. We would go that four days. So we would always maximize those days. Then what else you always get into is that as we're looking at our hours. You have days built in that if we have to use for makeup for snow days. Um you know, we, we could then start at a point adding days, adding Fridays in to to make up that time. So it kind of builds in some snow days as well. Uh you know, we, we do give a lot of options there. But you know, I appreciate the work that, you know, the parents, the teachers, administrators that that have put into this. Uh you know, looking at this and and trying to to dive into it. Uh so just wanted to use some C fact.
I have a question about um one of the questions, says question number five, four. Um if you're not in favor of moving to a four day school week, what are the primary reasons? And one of the choices is potential lengthening of the school year by several weeks. Would this lengthen the school year by several weeks?
Uh. There may be adding a week, like to make sure we get the touch. I'd have to go back and look at my calendar and I. Actually forgot my calendar. I was gonna bring that to kind of show a sample. Um and I could send that to you, but no, not by multiple leads. Uh you know, we would have to adjust some things, but the, no, I think it, you, we would still look at, I believe it was getting out. Was it getting out and still in May? I think we were still getting out in May. Uh but it would be the last region day, I believe. So we'd have to come back after that holiday. Uh but so.
Is he similarly?
It would be similarly, yes.
Okay.
Is there anyone from the committee that wants to provide any input or? Okay, great.
Well, I thought too, it's this kind of idea from a few members perspective and how I see. Thanks, we got Dr. Valenter covered all the technical parts to it. So once I heard it was called the Modified School Calendar Committee, MSCC, it had such a cool name. I said, I I have to do this. I gotta be part of the. MSCC. But uh one of the important things I think is that the, the committee, it's exploratory only. So there is no pretty conceit, you know, since going into this. We just wanna look at it. We wanna evaluate the feasibility and and report up as far as what can be done. Uh it's not being done in a vacuum. Dr. Ballinger has done a lot of work. A lot of us that are on the committee have these three of us are in the WCPS one on one. Uh and one of the things that we're pointing out is that we, we had the same transparency, the same open dialogue with Dr. Ballinger that we had during WCPS one on one. Which is, which is really great. I think that helps move the team forward, that we, we all feel very free, very free to speak. Uh he went out and he did some of the initial research, gave us some of uh data that was very balanced in terms of. Here's some places where they said it worked, here's some places where they said it didn't. And encouraged us to go off and do some, you know, independent research and and we've done some of that as well. So I wanna say I appreciate the opportunity to be part of the committee. I think it's it's an important task. Something like this, it's gonna give some more opportunities potentially. And there's always gonna be challenges whenever there's change. Uh people have to be flexible. Uh so we'll see how how flexible people can be and maybe the extent of the challenges that it's gonna create. And then uh the last thing really is uh our committee and and what I, what I view personally as our role. Is again to evaluate the feasibility, the level of support in the community. And then perhaps through surveys and things like that, we get the feedback. That may give us an opportunity to look at, well, what are some of the roadblocks? What are some of the things that that the community views as, hey, these are just the reasons they've been, we we can or shouldn't do this? And are those obstacles that can be overcome through policy, through other changes? Maybe we come back with a second survey and say, well, look, wow, you know, eighty percent of the feedback said this would be a challenge. Well, if we can address those through policy and some other means, maybe a second survey would say, oh yeah, maybe, maybe then I could go along with something like that. And then last thing is uh our, our committee's output, the way I I view is uh again, just to vary objectively, we're not the decision makers. But just to participate, uh engage and objectively bring our results to the decision makers to move forward or or not. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who or just made it and wants to say anything?
I'll say some things. So first of all, the, on the, I mean, it's this very interesting concept of looking at. I remember growing up. I think I heard some foreign countries, you know, did this school all year round. So you can do a couple less years of school. There's always some, some angle trying to. Figure it out, make it a little bit differently. So I'm, I'm not against the concept of looking into it. But one thing I would say for sure is that. Obviously with surveys, and we've done this, at least with different surveys that we put out to the, the uh people of of Warren County. Sometimes we get, we don't get, we get the same people responding or a very short and and a small number. If it were something as monumental as this, we'd have to some, you know, standards of success, like we need eighty percent somehow of them. We can't just have thirty percent that that say that we like it or we don't like it. There's, I I don't know how you mandate it, but but some sort of, you really need to get the, you know, standing out the door, giving it to the people in the cars or whatever it is. That would be one thing I'd say for sure, to have some sort of standard of success so that at the end when, even if new people, you know, new, new people move into the area to say. What's up with this? Four days a week stuff. And say, oh yeah, the people spoke with, you know, this percentage of people said whatever. So that's one thing. Secondly, on the actual. Survey itself is, you know, there's a couple of extra numbers here. We, you know, question one is also question two and so on and so forth. So just check that. And then the third thing would be on the uh question three, two and five, four. Um when, when asking, you know, what, what would give us some of the opportunity to say, give us all your, all your primary reasons. People have a lot of things. They're not all primary. I would highly recommend saying, what is your, out of all the reasons we list, what is the number one? And then a question after it, and then list all your other ones. And you list the same group of things again, because it's actually very telling because you can say. Okay, they, people have all kinds of issues with all kinds of things, but but this truly rose to that. And then you can know you can solve it or not solve it, depending what the thing is. So for both of those things, the, the why I'd be into it and the why I wouldn't be into it, say, what is the number one reason? You know, cause just, just to have it is, is so you just list that same question twice is just list one, you only get the opportunity to list one thing. And then go, go hobble, I'll list all your things in the second one. But at least you see what the number one thing is. And I think that'd be very beneficial. Um but yeah, I mean, if if the people speak and it somehow works out for us, I don't know if I, you explained it that. We might also have the Friday as well and it would be an expense thing. I, I like to see from our point of view, what is the benefit to us as well? Obviously, there's benefits to the parents, benefits to kids, benefits to faculty and staff, but. If it's gonna be, we're gonna be open for business anyway. It's gonna, we're just gonna do a five day work week and it's gonna still cost us more money to do it. I don't know how much I'm into that. Again, that's just my take on the thing. If it was beneficial, if we said, well, everyone gets a break in a sense with on the four days and they have the day off. Obviously, we'd have, we'd have less substitute costs, costs because people wouldn't be sick or take the days off. They'd have it automatically. There's some savings, electricity, heating. It's a lot of things that would be in it. That is a way to, to, I could get behind it saying, this is a way to actually try to sort of cut costs. Some may not share with them, but if we're gonna say, we're gonna do that and then also, by the way, pay people extra money on this day so we can take. That, that doesn't work well with me, but again, I'm, I'm willing to be open to anything, but if, if it were an actual four day, we're able to shut down business and. Sort of save money and then still meet all the goals and timelines and all stuff. I'd, I'd be open to looking at it again, but if. Parents and the, and the faculty and staff have to be well on board or it's gonna be chaotic.
Go ahead.
I just had, and because now two, both of you have spoken about the emails, um I guess just validating those emails. Like, I know you said one per family, but like, I have work email, school board email and. My regular email that I would use for our schools with Lou, um and then my husband had an email. So I guess just like, how are we gonna really validate that? I know you said you're not gonna want a bunch of students to answer it, but like, are we checking those email accounts? Like, it's not, you know, a kid using ten different emails.
Go ahead. And so I think there probably have to be, and this was something that we'd have to work with technology and and. Because we have emails in power school that are tied to to parents. And so we would have to. Cross reference and make sure that those, those are are valid emails. Cause this survey would only go out to those parents. That have children or guardians that have children in Warren County Public Schools. So this is not going out to the greater community because first we wanna get feedback from the parents or guardians that have students. In WCPS. And so we would have to cross reference those. Uh and you know, and. And for me, yeah, we, we talked a little bit about what is that threshold? We, we had that conversation about. Okay, are we gonna set that at eighty percent, eighty five percent? You know, what's the number? We, we did have those discussions. And and you know, we were also gonna get, try to get that feedback from the board as, as to you saying, you know, what the board feels would be, okay. This is the threshold we feel that we would have to have possibly, um as far as the number of responses. And and I, and I'll be honest with you, I mean, I, I don't know. Maybe it would be wise to, you know, like for instance, you just mentioned that you have, you know, in your household, there's two people to have. And in your household, there's two people that have emails. We may get two different results from two different, from, from, from who's filling that out. So, so I would say, you know, you are a parent, if you are a parent and you have a child in the school. Then you would be able to fill that out, give us your input. Then your spouse can give their input. Because that might be totally different pieces of input coming from that would balance things out. So, so I, I mean, you know, and, and then we could, we could check and make sure, okay. Check, we got mom checked, we got dad. Uh or check, we got this person checked, we have that person concerning with what's in power school. And I think, and I know I'm throwing you on the spot, but could we do a check like that with power school concerning the number of, of. You know, whose response to uh to a survey?
We're using Google Forms for.
Yes, we're using Google Form. Yeah, we would have to dump all the parent email addresses out of power school or that we can use Excel to, to batch everything.
Uh there are other, I mean, obviously that, that's a manual operation. There, I mean, there's, there's something called Survey Monkey. I don't make any money off of it, but there's different people use things. And you can just enter the emails. It could be anonymous survey that you don't even know who, all you know is who didn't answer. And you have all this, you can send it through the machine and and no one can answer it twice. I mean, that thing's a five hundred dollar yearly subscription. So I mean, there are, there are ways to. Solve the problem in an easier, more, less manual, more automatic way. And at least, and at the end you can get it. It's, I don't know, we use it for a lot of things in my work and. Works out very well. And it's so, it, it is the, and then no, and no one can fill it out twice just by definition because they get individual links sent to them. And um if they don't answer it, they don't answer. But you always know, you don't know who answered, you just know who didn't answer. So you can keep sending out reminders saying, by the way, here they are. And you just keep sending until it gets down to whatever number you wanna get down to. So there are ways to do it for sure.
And, and we did, uh so I also wanted to go back to one of your concerns, you know, talking about, you know, savings and and. And I don't know if I was, maybe I wasn't clear enough. I mean, there would be some savings. It's not gonna be as much. Because savings will, will vary between one percent or two percent. You're, you don't see uh all the time, uh a big savings. But when we look at. The Friday. So if we only have enough students that, that maybe we have one or two schools that need to be open. Then we're only gonna open those one or two schools. So it wouldn't be that every school, you know, we did survey out the teachers early on to say. Would you be willing to work at a school? So for instance, uh for the month of of August. All Fridays are at Resting Jeffries. The teachers that are teaching that Friday would go to Resting Jeffries to teach. They would, they would get a, you know, a supplement or a contract for those four hours because they would have worked their contract hours. Monday through Thursday. And so then we're only opening up the resties, we're feeding at resties. So that's why I'm saying you wouldn't see a. You know, the, the full two percent because you're going to be providing another service if that is what our community says that they, that we need. Um so I did wanna to clarify that as well. There, there, there may be some, but you're not going to see a. You know, if you're shutting everything down on Friday. And it would only be those teachers that, that responded that, yes, I'm willing to do this. Those that didn't respond, they're not coming in on Friday. Uh.
So I have a question about that. You said, so what teachers contracts, I know they're usually two hundred days, but are they, they're per hour? How, how many hours a day do they work?
So it's, it's seven and a half.
So they would, so basically instead of working seven hours times five, they'd work seven, seven and a half hours times four.
So it would add, add thirty five minutes. Eight.
But that's, that's what I mean, that way would just that, that, that Friday time would be made up. What would that look like for the remaining, like yearly employees that? You know, are your, like your administrators, your secretaries who aren't on those ten month contracts? So how would that?
So, so typically, you do the same thing. You know, if you have a school open, you're gonna have to have somebody there to, to, to monitor that as well. Uh you know, typically when you, you do something like this, it's for everybody.
So is there to get probably on an eight hour day?
What?
Your, your twelve month employees are on an eight hour.
Uh it would be, so at your schools, it's gonna be about the same. It's, it's the same seven and a half. Uh I believe, but. You know, your administrators are still working longer because their ball games. I mean, I, I can't tell you that I see a principal leaving before. Five o'clock usually typically any day, any, you know, on a regular day anyway. Uh but typically it's that, still that seven and a half hours.
Cause I think that would be something that would have to be clearly articulated for all staff, you know, you're. Whether you're a ten month, you're a TA, central office, you know, what does that look like? What are those expectations? So that the, it's not perceived as you're getting paid for five days but only working four.
Right, but it comes down to the violation season. Right, as long as you're getting the hours, uh you know, that, that hours is what means that out. So, and we did talk about that. Um you know, what does that look like for, for different things? So. But what we planned on was putting this survey out for a full, for the full month of April. Um giving an opportunity for parents to give us feedback. Uh what already is to give us feedback during the month of April. Um and then kind of come back. Now, this is not something that we would look at doing next year. So I do wanna clarify that. This would not be for FY twenty six. If survey numbers come back and things are favorable, this would be something that would be for FY twenty seven. Because we would have to take the full FY twenty six school year to plan. You know, one, we would have to provide professional development. I know that's one thing that this brag and I have talked about with, with teachers moving from a five day to a four day. How are we gonna adjust our instruction to make sure we're impactful? Uh also then, what will our, what will that support be on that Friday? What kind of services are we offering as far as educational components? And so there would probably be multiple groups. Uh there would be a policy group that we may have to say, okay, yes, we need to address this policy wise. Uh and, and so we would have multiple groups working on various aspects for the, for the full year of FY twenty six. To be able to implement FY twenty seven.
And will the survey, will it go out to K twelve parents or just say eleven or what do you, where you're, except the twelfth grader?
I mean, we would.
They could have younger kids.
Right, we would send it K twelve.
Pre-K.
Pre-K, pre-K twelve.
K twelve.
Yeah. If anybody that's in power school that has an email attached to their child, we would, we would want to send this out.
I would recommend you add that about which year we would be looking at to survey. Cause I'm gonna assume they're not all watching our very exciting meetings every, every two weeks. It might not have purchased yet. Um and I would just be careful with the questions, especially for question three slash two and five slash four. Cause one of the ones in three slash two says, check if this is accurate. So I mean, I understand. It depends on how we implement it and part of like, it sounded like we might go through several iterations. Like if everybody says. We would need services on Friday for sure. That would lead to one outcome and everybody, you know, whatever. But I would make sure that whatever options you put here are at least like expected or like o- options, like. Would it rehear- would be result in additional instruction time? If we did it a certain way, then okay, keep it. And with the several extending the calendar for several weeks, if that's not really on the table, then maybe just say extending the calendar. And with the several extending the calendar for several weeks, if that's not really on the table, then maybe just extending the calendar year. Period. You know, just be careful of what you put out there because I think
Yeah.
The way this reads, you would assume these things may be true.
Anything else?
You said, you said you've implemented this. Have it another, seen another district something? Is this?
Yeah.
And how, what were the biggest problems enough? What what did, when when that survey or whatever came out, what was the biggest, yeah, biggest problem?
Uh, when the survey came out?
Well, when when you, when you did implement, I mean, I, it's not, I haven't heard of a lot of counties doing that. So obviously it was a new thing.
So, well, it's not a new thing, um, if you go west. Uh, so in Oklahoma, Colorado, Oregon, um, New Mexico, you're seeing that that's where you see a lot of four day school weeks. Um, in Virginia, there are zero schools. So this Warren County would be the first school. Uh, you are starting to see some trickle in. I think Georgia has a couple now that that some schools are doing, um, so four days, so some schools closer to Betty. So it's not a new thing, but, uh, and and each, each system has its own challenges as you meet to the school. Uh, so where I was at, again, it was a very, very small system. Uh, ninety-seven percent of parents were in favor of it. So it wasn't, uh, it wasn't a concern. So, uh, and, you know, the 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 big part I would say is, is just the the instruction piece. Making sure that our teachers are are focused, that, you know, you don't have, the the biggest change for teachers is you don't have that fit day. So you'd have to compact all of your instruction and all of your support into that time. So time becomes more valuable as an instructor. And you have to be, uh, a little more focused when when you're instructing. And so that that would be the big piece from the instructional side, making sure that we have the professional development to talk about how we're going to implement and things of that nature. But of course, it's all for not if we get the survey back for for our parents and they say, yeah, no. Uh, you know, that we're just going to move on. Uh, but, you know, we, as the committee, we have, we have talked and explored and evaluated as much as we can. And now it comes to the point where we need to hear from the parents and guardians before we move forward with anything else.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Yeah. And I don't know why it put those numbers out to the side because all I did was download it. It wasn't like that on the Google Form. It was probably when I downloaded it to a PDF that it added those extra numbers. So, uh, I didn't catch that.
Computer access.
I know, but.
All right, um, with that, I'm going to ask that we be read into closed session, please.
So. Yeah. This motion is made that this open public meeting of the Warren County School Board become a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code, Section two point two dash three seven one one. The school board desires to discuss the following matter in a closed meeting. Section two point two dash three seven one one A one. Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of employees of the school board, specifically the personnel report and the personnel report addendum. Discussion or consideration or of admission or disciplinary matters of any other matters that should involve the disclosure of information contained in the scholastic record concerning any student in Warren County Public Schools, specifically student number two zero two five dash zero, zero three one nine dash zero one and student number two zero two five dash zero three one nine dash zero two.
Is there a second? Second. Mr. Mutton, I'm.
Mr. McFadden.
Aye.
Madam Chair.
Aye.
Dr. Font.
Aye.
Mrs. Lowe.
Aye.
Thank you.